At this time, I'll call our special call meeting to order. And I'll introduce Wes. Let you introduce our guests.
Good evening, I guess at 5 o'clock, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here to make a big step forward hopefully with our mega sites and share some details on what we've been doing for the past few months. So today, we've got the team from Garrett and Moore. Everybody has met Vance Moore before. He has brought some of his associates, Caroline Lefave and Craig Fortner. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna talk a little bit about the work that they've done to lead up to tonight, some of the considerations they've taken into account and everything. And then, once that's done, we will present the draft concept that they've come up with and discuss that. And there'll be opportunity for further discussions and questions and things like that. So unless Christine has anything she wants to add, I'm gonna turn it over to Vance.
Thank you, Wes. So I'm gonna just go through a few of our thought processes before we go over the design. So we'll start out discussing a few things, and we'll get into some visual aids that will help show some of these concepts and probably provide a better platform for discussion, you know, back and forth, why'd you do it this way and so forth. But I'm trying to give you a little background because I feel like it's easy to kinda go down a rabbit hole early if you don't look at the whole, you know, concept. So as a review, you know, what we're trying to do is a mega site, applying a, you know, large site handling a lot of material. And I'm sure most of this is old news for all of you, but just for clarification, the materials that we're trying to handle this facility, we'll start with municipal solid waste, household garbage, you know, things that, you know, people are used to taking out of the kitchen. And we're gonna also put in there what we call bulk, bulky waste. And this would be things like, you know, furniture, things that are not easily compacted. And that's one of the problems we had with our existing collection systems is these materials were put into open tops and you had a little weight for every haul that was required. There's a lot of money involved in hauling to operate these. But in our concept, those are gonna be combined. It's gonna be one waste stream. We're not gonna call them two different things. That's gonna be our municipal solid waste stream. Then we have our co-mingle recyclables, you know, your cans and your plastics and such. And then there's corrugated cardboard and then scrap metal. Now, scrap metal's a little separate from what you'd call white good, you know, appliance or whatever. This would be materials that could, they're collected, they don't have things like freon in them and things like that. Tires, waste tires. And then we have, as I mentioned before, white goods. That's your stoves and dishwashers and freezers and refrigerators and things like that. And then we also wanted to collect motor oil, used motor oil, as well as electronics like old TVs, things that for a long time were banned from being put in landfills and all, but there's some incentives to separate them from the waste stream. So kinda want to get in there, all the different types of waste and how we would propose that you do handle it. Let's start with the municipal solid waste and the bulk. So y'all familiar that most of our sites have compactors on the municipal solid waste? And what you're doing is you're putting a lot more waste in a single container before you haul it off. So the only thing that we're promoting here is that the bulk that is currently being collected in open top, just thrown into an open top container, will also be put into that same container. But to facilitate that, we're gonna incorporate a piece of equipment called a pre-crusher. What a pre-crusher does is break the material down before it actually goes into the compactor. It does a lot of things, but number one, it makes it so that when the material's in the container, they have to remove it at the landfill and it makes it break down in such a way that it dumps easier. But number two, it also helps tremendously on the compaction rate that you'll achieve versus one, versus a compactor only. So the municipal solid waste and the bulk, we're saying will go into pre-crushers. And really, what we're trying to do is we're trying to increase the efficiency, the hauling efficiency by doing that. Recyclables, we're incorporating recyclables that would also go into a compactor. The compactor will do the same thing as far as compressing the waste and hauling more tons per load. Cardboard, we're proposing putting a compactor to collect cardboard separately. Scrap metal, we're proposing that scrap metal tires go through an open top container, just like, there's no real value, especially the tonnages that you're dealing with, to go through and add compactors to try to compact tires or scrap metal. It's just not a very good cost return on that. And then with regards to your white goods, motor oil and electronics, these are materials that are, they're best handled at an on-grade type situation. The reason is, is how they're serviced, how the material, once they're collected, who comes and picks them up, the method that they're using to pick them up. So what we're proposing in this is a facility called a multi-material facility. This is a covered building. We'll go show you pictures, examples of where this has been used and how they are. But what it does, it allows for both the collection from the customer at grade as well as loading into, like you said, a traditional manufacturing facility where they load right into the back of a tractor trailer. It facilitates being able to do that with these materials. And then, last but not least, is yard waste. Yard waste is something that, you know, we do collect in Beaufort County. It is something that you wanted to continue to collect. And so I want to talk about yard waste first. And so the goal of our yard waste program was to eliminate the hauling of yard waste to all-site processing areas if possible. And so we also have to keep in mind, what is the final, what do you do with it once it's collected? So right now, the current practices are to, you grind it and the chips from the ground material are hauled off, and most recently, they've been hauled off to, I believe, a landfill facility that is using it for like an alternative daily cover. Now, one of the things, you know, we've talked about it briefly, I believe, at one of our previous meetings, is that grinding it does not eliminate it being called a waste material. You cannot store ground material for long periods of time without getting into other regulations, you know, things that are like composting. And compost is not something that I'm recommending that we get into. So the whole idea of this concept is that the material that is collected periodically as needed would be ground and the material that's ground up is hauled off-site. That's sort of the concept.
Vance?
Yes, sir.
Vance, a question about composting and hauling it off-site, seems like a lot of expense when all it is is biodegradable material, right?
It is.
And there's, are the pencil necks in Raleigh and Washington DC with the EPA involved with all this?
There are regulations. There's different types of compost depending on, they have type 1 through type 4 compost. Type 1 would be more like a yard waste. Type 4 would be more like a wastewater sludge that have pathogens in it. But any of this can have pathogens in it, just animal waste and so forth, and you have to treat it as such.
But it's not break down in a matter of days if it's, I mean, I can understand wastewater sludge, that's a whole different kettle of fish, and there's not gonna be that much of that now, is there?
No, sir. So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're asking, why are we not considering composting this material? I think is what you're asking.
I'm not clear on all the pointy little headed philosophies of those that now are getting their jobs back.
Well, I will tell you, there are requirements, regulations that tell you the way you have to monitor it and manage it. You have to monitor temperatures, you have to turn it, and you have to also sample it.
Right.
And then it comes to, all right, what do you do with it once it becomes compost? And if you're gonna sell it or give it away to the, to the final user, which may be the public who wants to come load a pickup truck load, or who knows, park and wreck, I don't know, that material has to be criteria that you test it for before it goes out.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not something that you just get into willy-nilly. Then there's stormwater runoff issues that you can get into also. Managing, is it covered? Is it open? And if it is open, rainwater's gonna come in contact with this material, it's gonna runoff. How are you managing rainwater? And what I'm telling you is, it gets far more complicated than you would anticipate, you know, somebody who's used to doing backyard composting, let's just say. It's not exactly that. So, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm saying that the facilities that I'm familiar with, they're in it in a big way or they're not. It's hard to do a little bit of composting. So...
So if you haul it off to another site, that could be a site that the county owns and the land could be the proper type soil, which should be about any soil for this, and then it, the drainage be proper, which would be probably very little drainage.
So what I'll tell you is, ground material, we talked about if you have, say, a large field like a storm debris site, some big area, if you put it in thin enough layers, you can get away with it. Putting the mulch material on is a sole amendment.
Mm-hmm.
But again, that is something that is not as crystal clear as you would say right out of the gate. It's something that you have an option to do that. I would say unless we have the particular site and you got to understand, you know, who the control of that site would be through and how it'd be spread and managed and monitored, you got to keep that all in mind. I'm not saying that anything I'm talking about's changing what we're doing on our design.
Mm-hmm.
Everything that we're saying, if you want to get into the composting business, you will probably have an option to do that down the road. It probably will not change a whole lot of what we're proposing, other than the potential to expand the pad that you put the material on, which will be either on-ground material or ground material, but it'd be the same pad.
Pat, concrete?
Well, we're not proposing any of that to be concrete. We'll get into this in a little bit, but right now, we're proposing it to be crushed stone.
Crushed stone?
Yes.
And why do you have to have crushed stone?
Well, what you're trying to do is keep the dirt and so forth from getting into your grinding situation. It causes some issues.
If somebody understands dirt, it really sounds crazy to me.
Well...
Are you trying to sell this to make money out of it? Is that what your thought process is?
No, I'm just trying to understand it. I think this is a very important part of what we're doing.
Well, there's a cost. It'd be, you'd almost need to look at it as a whole nother cost center. And would the sale of the material support the additional treatment needed to pay for it? Or would you supplement it through, you know, your fees or, you know, that all needs to be talked about. But again, I'm not saying do or don't do it. What I am saying is, it probably does not influence what we're talking about today a whole lot.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna get into a little bit. You need to, we need to really concentrate on the front end of it before we go too far down the back end of it.
All right. Back end's gonna move to the front though at some point.
Yes, sir. I do understand it. And I think, keep that in mind when we start talking about this layout.
Okay.
How would that work if you went down that road? That's what I would encourage. So some of the things that we've considered on these is that what would happen if customers were able to just put it right into an open top container, much like they're used to doing? What's happening now though, instead of taking that open top container with very little tons in it because it's not compacted and hauling it halfway across the county or more, it's a lot of money hauling it, could you just use that same methodology that's, you know, somewhat easy for the customer to drop it into a can? But you could take the can set across the county from here, you know, across the lot to an area that you manage it. So that was one of the things that we considered. It's basically, how convenient is it to the customer? How convenient is it to the person that's managing it? I.e. the staffing that has to be out there. So it's not, that's not really an operationally efficient way to do it, in our opinion. So another way that we looked, instead of putting it into a container, I think all of you are used to going to a site that has a vertical wall that you drop off into a container. Well, instead of it being a container, what if you had a large, like, concrete pad, just a big pad that you dropped it off on? And then you had equipment that could come and move it from the wall, leave you space to drop it, but it was, you know, pushed out to the side where it could be managed? We looked at that. It does, it simplifies, you know, the traffic flow and so forth on that. But you still, you got to have another piece of equipment, possibly another operator to be able to do that above and beyond, you know, the normal management of just people managing people that are dropping it off. You'd have to have really somebody above the wall and somebody behind the wall, essentially. And so in dealing with the staff, what we, what we thought was the most practical way to deal with it is to have a separate pad at the site that the customer goes and drops it directly on there. So there'll be some control as far as cones and all about dumping this area at this time that could be moved. But it's essentially the customer's taking it directly there. You'll have to see the layout for that to become completely clear, but all I wanted you to understand by this whole conversation is that we have considered a number of alternatives. And basically, through discussion with staff, is that they think this is the best way to manage it. Based off the tonnages and all that we're anticipating, this would be the recommendation. Now, one thing, if we have this pad, you still are gonna have to have something to manage the piles of material that are gonna be accumulated there. They're gonna probably be there several months at a time, and they have to be stacked and managed and filing's maintained, things like that. So we're gonna incorporate into this a shed area to park equipment, to have, you know, where do you fill up tires? Where do you charge batteries? Where do you do things like that? So that's just one consideration. So that's the yard waste side of things. And what I'm, what I'm making a point of, the yard waste is kind of a whole nother animal versus everything else I'm getting ready to talk about, if you go with this concept. Now, the drop-off facility itself, it's gonna be very traditional to what you're used to seeing where you have a, you could do really two main options. You can do an at-grade site. That means you do not, you do not have retaining walls and dropping it down into a container. The container sits on the ground, the customer has to lift and place it above, over the side. It's very inconvenient to do that with the compactor situation. The height that you have to lift it up and to get it in, it's just, it's not, it's not what people do these days. If you're gonna go to the compactor, you need to go to an elevated design. And so what we've incorporated is an elevated design with, a lot of people refer to it as a sawtooth wall, and we're gonna show you that in just a minute. But it gives the ability of the customer to go over, and you do have a wall, but you drop it down into the, either the hopper or directly into the container. And it gives it a way to, it just makes it more convenient for the, for the customer. And I think you'll see about the way we can service it. Now, we've also incorporated, as I mentioned earlier, a multi-material facility, a building. It's really gonna be more or less a roof over a concrete pad that allows you to manage some of these. And I will show you that. The materials like white goods, electronics and motor oils. And we're gonna show you some pictures that just give you an idea of what we're looking at here. But what it does, what we're trying to do is, is provide a way for the customer come in, to come in on one side, the staff can manage the material, and then the service provider who picks up that material can come in to the backside of the building that customers and service vehicles are not intermingling, which is a safety issue. And you're gonna hear us continue to reiterate that. Service vehicles and customer vehicles intermingling is something that's not desirable. So basically, what I'm saying is, we're recommending an elevated design with a wall instead of an at-grade. Then you start talking about, okay, do I want one entrance with the same, one point of entrance and exit? Or do I want a point of entrance with a separate exit and kinda do the U-turn, I mean, the U shape or one end, turn around, come back out the same? We're gonna recommend that you use a one-point entrance. There's a couple of reasons. Don't feel very strong either way, that both can work. They both have their advantages and to tell you the truth, the parcel that this is sited on could have a lot to do with this. The single point of entrance, if you have to do any kind of turning lanes or road widening associated with this facility, the single point is obviously gonna be less than having two and having to do turn lanes for both of them. So it's less cost associated with the DOT improvements. So we're recommending on our concept a one-point of entrance for the customer. I want to emphasize "customer." But at the same time, we're just gonna show you that we're recommending a separate entrance point for the service vehicles. Again, we're trying to keep surface, service vehicles intermingling with the customer. And on the conceptual design, hopefully, we'll be able to show you some of that, what we're trying to do. Now, on our traffic flow, one thing that the most complaints you have about these facilities is delay of getting in and out. They're stacked up, it takes too long to get in and out. One car that pull in a trailer blocks the whole shooting matchup, blocks everybody. So it takes, you know, one thing to mess up everybody. I think what you'll see here, we're trying to prevent that. Trying to give plenty of room for people to get in, to get around, and we should not have a situation where somebody alone at one place is gonna block up the whole works. We'll talk about that a little bit. We want something that is easy for the attendant to be able to monitor. If you have things spread out all over, it's hard to be two places at one time. So if you have things somewhat centralized, you can kinda direct people, get an idea of what they're doing and give them some guidance on what's going on. So not that spread out, it would be a goal. Maintenance considerations. We're gonna talk about what kind of surfaces are on the different parts of it. I believe we're recommending that the customer side of things should probably be paved asphalt. There's no reason that it couldn't be a concrete, it's a money issue. You know, there's a return, you know? We're recommending that the service side of things, where the cans are gonna be picked up and the heavy trucks go onto, that that's gonna be a crushed stone over geotextile. It's a design that we've used very successfully. There's low maintenance for, you know, heavy vehicles that are turning and doing all those kinds of things that will happen here. We'll talk a little bit about lighting. You know, this facility may be open after dark. You know, you may want to expand your hours. So we need to consider, you know, how much lighting, where do you want to put the lighting? You know, all of this stuff influences the budget, every one of these considerations. Then we want to talk about potential for future expansion. You know, what if? We've talked about composting. What if recycling changed? What if we want to do something completely different? Do we have the ability to incorporate new ideas, new expansion? I've heard talk about, what if we want to do C and D? What if, you know, we don't want to paint you in the corner right now. So our concept is to give you a little bit of flexibility on that. Now, I think it's time to kinda get into some of the pictures, kinda get into some of the visual aids and we can talk through it. And I'm sure you'll have a lot of questions after that. One thing that I will tell you about this concept, this kinda ticked all the boxes on the wants. What I will say is that, oh, my concern is, I'm a little concerned about the budget side of things. Like, I really want that, but am I willing to pay for it? So when you're looking at this, I'd like you to kinda consider, well, I know you're concerned about the budget, but that's important to me and that's not, type stuff. And all this stuff that I've mentioned to you, it all has a cost side of things. So Caroline, why don't we start with maybe a couple of examples of the, just so they got...
The ones we talked about today or the ones from Wake County?
Let's just show the Wake County ones real quick, just so they have it. We use the term multi-material facility.
(laughing).
We use the term multi-material facility. I just want to show you a picture of one first, and we'll show you how it's incorporated. If you can see this building, see, it's basically a shed roof, another roof on a concrete slab. And you see the different sections. You can label it, and it could be changed what you handle in it. There's nothing in it that says only this can go here and only this can go there. It's very flexible on how you can do it.
Wake County?
This one's in Wake County, is an example. So just, just a picture of one, just to show you. Some things that you'll take note of here. Now, notice how they have a concrete apron coming out from the building. Notice how they have, you know, traffic control of these, you know, we use the term bollards and so forth. Now, these are not, these are things you could run over and they break, and you're gonna be maintaining these things all the time. Now, whether or not you want that, or you want steel pole, and steel pole's gonna win and the customer's gonna lose. You got to make those kind of decisions on these things. But that's a multi-material facility. We're gonna recommend that at this, where your customer is loading materials into containers, that they're covered with a shed-like roof. Do we have that one?
Yeah, I'm trying. It's thinking real hard for some reason. There it goes.
This gives you an example so you can see the roof. It's just a simple shed roof, but that gives the attendant a little bit of cover from rain and a little bit from sun, and it helps the customers when they have the car unloading. It's, again, I think it's a nice addition. I'd say not 50% of the facilities that have been done have that now, but most of the new ones have this now. You'll also see, one thing I'd like you to point out, you see, there's three people working this particular site. Do you see how they have the yellow bollard sticking up? The cars don't back up right up to the wall. There's a space, the car that's blocked, and how far the car can back up into before it gets over. And that's what you can see kind of middle one is going on.
And that's safety, for your attendants and for your customers and for your concrete wall.
Yeah. But in particular, the worst-case scenario is somebody getting pinned, child or something getting pinned in between a car and this wall.
Because we provide multiple parking spaces for each container, and so somebody could be there depositing material when somebody else comes up. It's important to have some kind of barrier there.
I use the term compactor, just what it would look like with an elevated site.
This one or the ones you had?
Pick one of them up. We'll just describe what we got. So in this, you'll see a concrete wall that's about 42 inches high. And up above that is what's called the chute, and that's where the customer places material. And it's got expanded metal on top, but below it is gonna be more solid metal that's directing it either to the compactor or to the pre-crusher. And you'll see, it's got a door that can be shut so that when it's operated, if anything was to happen to fly out, it keeps it contained within that box. So this is, this is just an example of, I believe this example right here is a pre-crusher. All right?
On the pre-crusher, if somebody's got a sofa, they gotta go over that 42-inch wall?
Yes, sir. That is absolutely correct. And so that, that's another thing you need to consider. You know, the size of this opening? Do you want it so they can throw a six-foot sofa in it?
Well, that's part of the problem with that, is safety. Safety gets the really big issue.
Walls are important for pre-crushers.
So when you're seeing this, this expanded metal cage, the size of this opening can be something that you say, we, we don't want some of this material, we don't feel like it's our job to provide that. Or you can make it as big as you want. Nothing that cost won't take care of. But I'm just saying, that's some of the considerations of this thing.
How loud is the pre-crusher?
It's not loud. It's all, all this is gonna be an electrical motor, running hydraulics, and the loudest thing you're gonna hear is the frame and the crushing and breaking of, you know, wood and all that kind of stuff.
You could have a drop-off place for bulky items and then just let somebody with a loader put it through the crusher.
Possibly. And we're gonna talk a little bit about some of those options. And we're going to talk a little bit about some of those options. All right, I think we've got, so this is going, we've got one that is very similar, but it looks for co-mingled.
Co-mingled.
Or cardboard, either one works. But similar but different. So this is an example where mixed, co-mingled recyclable materials are going on there. So you see, there's a little bit difference in the size of the opening that goes in there, but this is where, this is where they're placing. You see they said, "Don't bag." They don't want it in the bag. That's because it doesn't do good on the side that people that have to do something with the material in the material recycling facility. But this is an example of a compactor being used to put co-mingled recyclables in. It very, I mean, there'd probably be no difference between a cardboard and a co-mingled recyclable, except the sign that you put on it. It'd look almost identical.
And this expanded metal cover they have here would help keep people from throwing un, you know, expanded boxes into the container,防止 them to break it down.
So that's what that is. So that opening, that face of that does not open. You have to fit it through the slot. So you're not throwing unbroken boxes in it. You're having to flatten them out and put it into the bottle. Equipment shed. Now, this is, this is from Botha County Health Department. This is something Ms. Smith sent me today, but, I mean, this is an example of something like this is what we'd be using for the equipment shed. You know, may not have all the lean-to sides or whatever, but we're not talking about needing anything too fancy, but probably would have sides, you know, walls on it instead of open-top, something we would recommend. But that's getting more into our yard waste. This whole yard waste, we can, we can go down a little ways on that here in a little while. So I think that at this point, it's probably worth saying, well, here is the design. This, we don't have a site, we don't know the size or the shape of the site. This is a theoretical, we have a blank square, this is flat grade. How would we do the design? So we've got some examples.
Do you have the A, B, and C, the other...
We, we, we do. You'll just show them.
Okay.
Then you put the...
I think one, I'm not sure if that's the one that has all the old ones in it. You guys see my dog? I'm sorry.
Well, what, I think that what Ms. Smith wants to show is that we did several designs. We had two designed ones, we had different layouts and so forth, and they were not preferred for numerous reasons. And I think that the only reason I'd like to say this is, if this doesn't work, we're not going back to square one to fix some of this stuff. We're saying, well, we're trying to not make it too confusing. Well, that is an example of one that we did provide. Now, this is a little bit of a hybrid one.
Oops, sorry.
It's a one-intrance facility. You'll see roads going around to the side. That is for the service vehicles only, but you'll see that the service vehicles and the customers both use the same entrance. Not my favorite concept on that. And it as well is the yard waste. People that are going through the yard waste pad on the one you just had, had to use the same road as the service vehicles. Here's, I've got another example. It's kind of similar to what you're looking at, but you see that the yard waste is on a different side. Difference on this is that in an attempt to maybe save some fill material to build the site up, the inbound side would be at grade, the outbound side that you're going to dump on would be at elevation. That creates some issues about what do you do with the slope in between the two roads? Is it grass, or you're going to have to mow it? You know, all of this kind of stuff, you know? So a lot of, a lot of things that, you know, these didn't rise to the cream of the crop. So I think what we concentrate on the one we did, just want to show you that we have talked about them among ourselves, is the point. So we have our...
Yeah, we've got it up as well.
I think it's the one we're showing them now, I guess.
That's over River Road.
All right, so this is, this, basically what you're going to see on this one is, the customer entrance would be at the top of this page. So only customers that are dropping off materials would come in. So you're coming in, you're going up at a grade to get up to your five-foot elevation, you're going down to a cul-de-sac to do a turnaround. At that point, you have the option either go off to the yard waste facility, which would be isolated by some kind of a barrier, maybe split rail fence or something. You're just trying to keep your customers away from the service vehicles. And then you'd come back out, and, you know, at least your attendant has the ability to see them going back out. So, you know, if they're doing something wrong, at least you can say, hey, next time, don't do that. So the attendant, who would be up here near what we're calling the sawtooth area, is going to see every vehicle coming in and every vehicle leaving by this approach. Now, what you're seeing here, the zigzag part, that is where you're going to have a wall with a container below you, like the pictures we were showing you a while ago. And we've got a, I think we've got a section that we provided them. Let's just pull that up real quick, and we'll come back to this one. All right, this is just a visual of the section. So the right-hand side of this image would be your customer bringing materials to the site. The idea is that, you know, trucks, cars alike would be able to back into, you know, pull in and back into a spot. You would have a bollard preventing them from coming too far back. You would have the wall sticking up above the driving surface, and the people are able to place their material directly from that 42-inch height over into the container or into the compactor, like we showed you pictures of. So this is an example of an open-top that we're showing you. A compactor will look like the pictures that I just showed you. So if we go back to the other one. So all the zigzag part, and maybe you can show them with your pointer, there are seven containers that are incorporated into here, and they're labeled. So we're saying, three of them are labeled MSW slash bulk. You heard me say earlier that we would put a pre-crusher on MSW and bulk. Now, I do not think that Botha County, even at a mega-site, needs to have three pre-crushers. We think that you would have two pre-crushers, and one of these would be an open-top, like we were saying before. Let's just say you have the couch, whatever material that you don't want to go through your pre-crusher, just for, you're minimizing what would go into an open-top. But it's also an opportunity for expansion down the road. Let's just say you wanted to add a pre-crusher, take C and D or whatever, that could be converted into that use, is an example. Then we have a cardboard and recycling, both of those would have compactors on. And then we have tires and metal, and those would just be open-top containers that the customer drops directly in. And then you see the multi-material facility kind of more towards the left, towards the circle cul-de-sac. The customer would come in from the cul-de-sac side, the material would be unloaded, you know, in the instance of like TVs, it'll be put on pallets, probably wrapped, so that they can then be just loaded directly into a truck, bed truck. And that's what those four blue items are representing, is like, that's representing a truck, a bed truck, is backed up to a loading ramp at, from the back of the building. So customers will not be allowed to go back into those trucks. That's just your employees that would be taking material from the multi-material facility into the truck, or your vendor who you hired to take this. So zoom back out on this, please. So we're also, you're seeing a separate area, the hatched area that's the bottom entrance, that would be your service vehicles that are going to pick up containers and drop off into containers. Coming in, there should be no interaction under this concept between Lars Truck servicing this and any of your customers. And that will, we just think it's a good practice to have that. This long entrance of the customers also gives you a lot of queuing distance. You can stack a lot of cars in here before they go back into the road, the DOT road. So you've got plenty of space, you're not blocking traffic out on the main road, they can get in. You also have plenty of lanes on this option, that even if they're backed up, you see the, you got the pass-through lane, if you will, and you've got the area that you back up into. There's a lot of area there, so that that one customer, even with a trailer behind a truck, is not going to block the ability to go out. Be very, they'd have to work very hard to block this area, take up that much room. Now, getting back into the yard waste, we were showing a concept at the bottom left, that square with, that's symbolizing a pad. The customers or the darker areas, that would be stacks of yard waste that are separated. There's a length, there's a width, and there's a height limitation of how you're supposed to store this material. Put fileings in between them, so you're supposed to separate them. So those are, those are representing the piles of debris that could be stored out of this site, where it would be stuff. The whole thing would be a big, would be a big stone pad. But your piles of debris, it's not just a big hump, it is lines of debris, is the way it's supposed to be managed. That, the customer that's going out there would then loop back out and go back out, like I said before. The whole facility is at the same elevation, so when you come in, you go up the elevation, you're not splitting lanes going, you know, different elevations. You don't have a whole lot of like brass median things going on that has got to be mowed and maintained and things like that. So that was our, our concept for this. Now, we have, we've spent some time, we know the quantity of dirt that it will take, we know the quantity of asphalt, we know the quantity of retaining wall, all those things, and, you know, so when you're doing a cost assessment, you essentially, you take all those quantities, and you put in your best guess of what a contractor will charge you at unit price to do, and you add them all up. And we've used a lot of examples. The first thing that I'll tell you is that, as everybody knows, the wall of construction has gone crazy. And you cannot look at something two years ago and say, "Wilson County did it, and it cost them this, and I can do it today for that." It doesn't work like that. We've got projects all over that we're having a hard time just to get people to bid them, you know, finding materials. So I would just tell you, right now is not an ideal time to do some, some construction work. What I will say is, this is typical earthwork, this is typical paving, and pretty minor on the architectural building side of things and utilities. So I think there's a large contingent of people local that can do all this work, which is in your advantage. That's a good thing. But, that being said, I don't want to be the winning bidder. When I put a cost estimate, I, you know, the worst thing I can do is be the low, the low bidder. That means everything's over budget. When we estimated all these quantities, I think I came in front of you and I said, "I would budget $2 million to build each mega-site." That was, I thought, an ample budget. When we have put our minds together and come in here, we think this one is going over $2 million. So the first thing is, I like what you've got, I want you to build what you've got, or no, we're not willing to go that high. We need to go back to the thinking board and decide what we can do without. But I thought we ought to at least say, this is the wants. This is what we said addresses all the needs, checks all the boxes, and there may be a better way to skin the cap. But I didn't think it was our job to start doing that for you until you at least got to hear the thoughts that were put in behind this, and you may send us in a whole different direction. Now, I will say this, our estimate, we were assuming that the county would put in, pay for the compactors and the containers and so forth. You may be able to say, hey, we're going to bid this out, and the person who operates this on our behalf must apply all the equipment. Now, you're still paying for it one way or another, but I'm just saying, it's all the way you look at it. The way I'm looking at this is, you're buying compactors, you're buying containers to operate this. So, but I cannot deliver the picture that's in front of you for the $2 million budget that we talked about when I was here before. So we do have a 3D rendition that you can kind of look around, if you think that'll help you visualize it, try to put a little time into it if that will help. But I think, I'm at the point that I've run out of things to say, and it's time for discussion.
On the electronics and mixed material collection and so forth, and you've got the office, are you saying that the person would take it to the office, and then that person, employee, would take and put it in the, in those truck for the trailers?
So what I, what I envision is, that office service is for the attendant. It would have, you know, bathroom in there, and so, now, whether or not it, the whole thing, we labeled it office, there's going to have to be things that need to be stored. Let's just say, you know, minor tools and all, that have to be out there. We're saying that the, you've got an open-air part of this, and the office part would actually be walls and so forth in that part of it. Now...
Vance, I mean, how do I get from that lane where I back up? How do I get around there? Because I mean, it looks like about a three-foot door that you walk through.
No, sir, the whole front, no, you're not, will you show it?
Yeah.
Can you see the, the, the front of the building that's open is where her, all across the whole front of where her hand is.
You should have shown some parking spaces.
So you'll be able to back up to that?
Yes, yes.
Back up to that, and there'll be a shed room, and that's a 50-foot dimension right there.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have shown some parking spaces.
So we could put, yeah, if we put parking spaces out going kind of top, that would make it clear for the way it's intended to be used.
So the black dots are not for customer access? The black dot areas are grayed out?
That's just showing the different material. So the yard waste pad, customers would have access to that, and that is stone, but it is the stone paving as opposed to the asphalt, which will be up in like the customer access lanes other than the yard waste area.
The area with the blue truck will not have customer access.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's basically going to be a, you know, a four-foot loading dock.
Just want clarity, C and D construction stuff's going to be handled somewhere else.
So, went over it for clarity. We did not include C and D as material we are proposing to handle at this time. Now, this facility could be changed with very little effort to put in, let's just say, another pre-crusher or something. And one of these, we've got three stalls that are set aside for municipal solid waste slash bulk. Probably don't need three stalls. You certainly don't need three pre-crushers for an MSW. You could, you could designate one of those as C and D, but it's open-top standby, if something goes bad. The whole thing is, you know, do you want two extra stalls, you know, for the future while you're building? Those are things, that's kind of the conversation, but extra stalls, more walls, things like that.
Right. Now, present day, somebody, if we built this, somebody with C and D would take it out to the same place they're taking it to now, or take it across the county line for disposal over there.
My, my understanding is, you can take C and D directly to the transfer station near Flanders Filters Room.
Right.
Or you can go to any other permanent facility, which the next closest one would be EJY.
Right. And the problem is, you need to set the scales if you're going to handle much C and D.
Yes, sir.
And that gets to be, you know, a whole, whole other thing unto itself.
Well, it comes to the funding side of things. Well, how do you pay for it? And, you know, there are options that you could do, that it gets into the whole, who's paying for it, how much are they paying for, and is it, is it something that you want to do as a service?
Our problem, I think, I want to say this, tell me whether you agree or not, our problem is, we just don't have enough trash. If we had more volumes of trash, we'd be doing something, things different than what we're doing now. While our trash is expensive, we don't have enough.
Well, I understand. Economies of scale, I think, is what you're getting at, economies of scale, but, yes, sir. We had another graphic before we do this. This facility, we thought... This facility, we thought it'd be interesting for you to see this layout on top of the River Road site so you could see for scale. How big is this versus our current River Road site, which is one of your busiest sites? Just to give you...
Let me ask one more question before you go on to that. You're going to have to provide stormwater treatment for this site. That's, and that's, that's a lot of the money that commissioners don't see here, is this, you know, and that would be a pond in this case, because we're not, even if we bought enough land to become low density, I don't think that we, under the regulations, we could get away with low density at this site.
Somebody to tar panel coat buffers and require nitrogen and things like that?
Yeah.
So this is just for visual reference. I mean, I, I understand, you know, working on the scale.
Thanks, that won't let you do it because you've got too much paint.
It may be hard to see some of this and maybe use your pointer to point to the different features, but this is the same site that's on your piece of paper. It's just thrown on top of GIS imagery. So, so Magnolia School Road is the road that you're seeing down here, and the entrance, kind of pointed where the entrance right, right there.
Oh, the existing entrance.
That's the existing entrance. Show them the proposed blue, that blue, see where her hand is right there? That's kind of showing you for scale, the same entrance. So the, where you come in for this customer, I mean, for River Road, you can kind of see it's, you're, you're doing the loop before you even hit the first can on the proposed site, just for a matter of scale. And you see how, you see how large this is in relationship to that. So again, we're trying to do a little more River Road on the mega site. This is a, this site is a very, this, this should serve you for the foreseeable future if you were to build this.
Is it with size?
No, sir. The one that I'm proposing here, it has, it has certainly got enough area and space to serve you for the foreseeable future.
Is there a River Road?
No, sir. The proposed one that I'm showing you on the white piece of paper?
If you have a River Road there, you see.
Would not. It's a lot, it is, this will be substantially larger. But at the same time, I'm telling you, this is over the budget that we talked about.
Vance, to push some clarity on Commissioner Richardson's point, when the board hears crushed stone, crushed stone is considered impervious surface, so there's runoff that occurs with that that you have to treat and look after.
Yeah, you have, you have to treat it, but even if you could do low density, that'll let you get away with putting it on fabric now, but that won't work on a site, I don't think that produces pollutants like this one will, so you're just not going to be able to get away with it.
Let me ask this concerning the yard waste. First of all, we can handle a hurricane, or, or we consider hurricane debris as yard waste?
Storm debris. They're two different things.
Okay. Are we, is that...
So the concept would be, if you got to a point that storm debris overwhelmed the normal yard waste operation, this will be day-to-day handling yard waste that occurs, you know, traditionally, historically, whatever. What our thoughts were when we, when we did the analysis is that the White Post landfill would continue to be a storm debris site from the north side of the river, and then the south site, mega site, would have additional land associated with it that would be the storm debris site for the south side of the river, which would be separate from this. But what we've considered is, how would you access the storm debris site, you know, from this if you activated it? And for me, it would probably come in through the service entrance of our proposed, you know, with the service entrance, to go to the storm debris site, because they're probably going to be, most of the contractors using, bringing it to you anyway.
One more thing about the yard debris. There's no way, and don't yell at me, don't laugh, but there's no way we could burn this. And I'll, and I'll say this, our animal site, you never see smoke or anything, it's so efficient.
So here's what I'll, here's what I'll tell you. I've got people that I've done this for, that are in the business. They are in the business of clearing land for like developments and so forth, and air curtain burners. This, you know, they have them, they mobilize them, they use them. We have many customers that have yard waste collection sites, that they're saying, "What do I do with this stuff?" And we've tried numerous times to say, "Mr. Air Curtain Burner Person, would you please come in here and, and burn this debris in lieu of other ways of doing it?" And you cannot get any of them to touch it, because most of the time, what they're concerned about is other contaminants that are in it that they don't control and that they're responsible for because their permit, their Title V permit follows them. And so they're burning something that they have very little control over. And burning, you know, one time a year for a county can lose their contract for what they do every day. So the, the air curtain burner thing, I'm a fan, we've tried to go down that road, but we've had no success of finding people who own air curtain burners who want to do this. Craig's done a lot with Nash County, wouldn't you say that's the...
Yeah, we've also experienced a little bit of difficulty from regulatory side. What, what the regulators want to see is, you have a facility, you have your air permit for that facility. They don't want, they've been hesitant to allow somebody to travel around to landfill specifically to burn for, for the reasons that Vance is.
And they're going to have setback distances from residences and, and things like that and, you know what? But air curtain burners, I would love for somebody to come out of the woodwork and say, "Hey, I'd love to get a shot at that." We haven't found it. You know, again, spitball a little bit and I'm, I'm looking back here and she'll say, "Please don't." But I mean, when we were thinking about it is, you know, how can you grind it? I mean, I, I had the picture of the guy that cleans up the trees, you know, throwing it into the back of the grinder and it goes into the back of the truck and it goes, done, you know, something like that. That's kind of what you're doing. You're just doing it once a year, twice a year. You know, you're doing that. So I think that's the best way to do it. I think a horizontal grinder is a lot safer than a, than a tub grinder, so I bring that out. You know, it definitely got to be away from the public when you're doing one of those. So just, just some thoughts. Yard waste creates unique issues, I'll just tell you that. All right, 3D, just so they can see that, is more of them just seeing real quick?
So what I'm about to show you is a partial rendering of what the site would look like that we have land development we're discussing today. And I'll caution, it does not have any of the buildings that we've talked about, either the, the multi-material building, the awnings over where the customers will drop off their materials in the bins, or the equipment storage shed. But this was, this is more of a plan view, like we, like you're looking at on your page, and I've applied shading to represent what areas would be asphalt, what would be concrete and/or retaining wall, and what would be grass or some other, you know, non-pervious or impervious surface. You know, kind of flying around here and apologize, trying to, trying to keep up here, but this would be, you know, approaching things from the service side.
Just, just so then, one thing you can do with this, and if it makes clear, you can do what's called vertical exaggeration. It makes things stand out a little better, but it, it's not realistic of the way it looked, but it brings more attention to detail, so I think this is a one-to-one.
This is a, this is no vertical exaggeration.
And, but if you're like, "I'm not really seeing anything but a bunch of shades," he can stretch it out and it makes it stand out a little more.
Yes, and now we're, we're factor three vertical, and you can, you can very clearly see now our zigzag wall, our sawtooth wall, and the elevated portions of the facility up here on the asphalt portion of the road. And then everything having to do with yard waste and service is back on grade. And it really, the, the point of this is just to say, not everybody can look at a plan and not see spaghetti. This is, this is good to provide a visual for, you know, folks who don't look at plans every day.
And, and this very much, the, sorry, I just can't see it anymore. The elevation difference and the elevation change going to a built-up site influenced a lot of this design, because some of the other plans that they were putting up for you to look at, the, the field material, that field area was so much larger, and so obviously, you know, field material costs. So as part of the, trying to get the most bang for our buck from the plan, that's why we ended up with, that's why we landed on what they just presented to you. Because again, if you're looking at this, the actual elevated portion, we tried to minimize it, the only the portion at the sawtooth wall and then also at the mixed material shelter, which functions basically as a loading dock so that the trucks get back up to it. That's the only place, and then you'll see as Craig zooms out, the entry, entryway, you know, where you obviously have to slope down. So sloping up, sloping down, there are considerations with runoff as well as with the trailers that will be visiting the site. You know, you can't have, your grade can't be that so steep because of some of the vehicles and trailers that will be going in and out, also going, and so that way we're maximizing what the natural ground is in Beaufort County. Beaufort County's flat landers, that's what we have here. So if we happen to hit upon a site that has some elevation difference in it, that would be fantastic, because this plan, you can flip it, you can mirror it, you can do different things. But what we're looking at here is Beaufort County totally flat, and this having to bring the end and all the field to provide any of that elevation.
And to add to that, we've, and, and also minimize, in addition to minimizing the area of field, we've minimized the height. We've gone as low as we can go where people will not be, you know, picking things up into a dumpster. You know, it's, it's even with the top of that wall.
And regarding the wall, right now it seems like it will be a big change. We're about to put rails up at our existing sites, which is really not going to be that big of a change because of the safety issue. If someone can load the waste into their vehicle, that they get loaded over the wall. It's not, it's, it's actually lower than what a lot of pickup tailgates are now. And the other thing by having the space in between as far as people unloading from one to the other, when Wes and I visited these other sites, the sites were clean. And there were many reasons why the sites were clean, the attendants that were there, the attendants were howling about because they were standing in the shade with fans running, so they were not in the building. But also, when you have to go from your vehicle and walk across a span of 12 to 10 to 6 feet, whatever the space may be, it's going to come, you're going to put it in a bag. You're not going to have your tied bottle and your, your two-liter bottle and your shoebox here, that you're going to have to make multiple trips back and forth, and then you drop it on the ground and people don't pick it up, or that you drop the Walmart bag and you then take it and blows it off into the fence. People will contain their, their waste better because they're picking it up one time, putting it in the compactor and taking it back. So overall, the appearance of the sites are much improved from the appearance of our current sites.
I'm hoping that we're going to have the ability to hose down some of these areas.
Absolutely. That was part of the reason for having concrete and asphalt. There's, this site we've included in the estimate, having, hopefully probably county water, having a water tap there, having multiple taps so that then we'll be able to hose down. Also that the office, instead of being a portable body, it would be included in the facility, so there would also be a small set of field that would be located on the site. Because this, this is not a single-person site. I think throughout the many months, even years, we're looking to improve the customer service at the sites. In my opinion, this is at least a three-attendance site. And because of the volume of the people that were there, if I was stacking it, I would have three attendants, one manning the yard waste, because if you don't, you're going to have CND or only the yard waste. Second and third would be up top at the mixed material and then also at the sawtooth, and then perhaps work on a one-hour or two-hour rotation. But site attendants out, meeting customers and being there and making sure things are in the appropriate container is what is needed, and I think that's, that's, that's part of what would make this a much improved site.
I would like for you to do a serious comparison in using, between using concrete and asphalt for, for several reasons. Number one, asphalt's a lot cheaper up front, I agree. Long-term, when it comes to maintenance, concrete pays for itself, or at least it has. I don't know what the economics are right now, but, but in the last five years, it pays for itself real quick. So I want us to be serious about that. The other thing is, concrete looks much cleaner. Asphalt can get dirty and messy and does all kinds of bad things. So they are competitive and they have been competitive in the past. I just don't know who's gouging who right now on those expenses. The other thing I would like, I think, for you to provide enough room so that we could service the environmentalist who is really concerned about sorting things, glass bins, for instance, let them sort their plastic. Let them sort stuff if they want to. Now, I realize that this is an expense item and it may take a while for it to pay off, but I think that we need to be able to provide it simply because it's something that the public wants and the public is sensitive about.
I totally understand and some of the things to, to consider. Now, again, I think we've been conservative, but you look at this big circle, you know, you're not really going to drive across the whole thing. Does it have to be paved? And right now, we're saying it is paved, but that gives you that big call to say, maybe we'll pull the conceptual button. It gives you room to put things out there. You can do activities in the center of that circle that, you know, you may not have planned on, you know, that are out there. So that's some of the flexibility items that we were talking about. You know, if we absolutely, you know, had to cut some budget, well, you don't have to pave the whole interior, but then what's it going to be? How are you going to maintain it? There's, there's all these issues. So right now, again, I think that we have provided a layout, a concept, if you will. We feel like that checked the boxes. That's, that's the way we look at it. Just check the boxes.
And one of the things also, when you look at this plan, I mean, admittedly, when I look at this, my, one of my first thoughts is, well, can we squish this up? Can we do this? Can we do that? But by not doing that at this time, that gives us the flexibility in the future, because, such as if a commodity suddenly becomes, where it's profitable for us to pull it out. Right now, ECBC is the only work around and they want things covenable, separating it out doesn't do anything. But if suddenly a commodity becomes hot and you get more than we could do that, and we could, there's room at the front as well as what Vance says in the book, but also the, the room, the additional space, hurricane, storm events, as it's something temporary, we're going to need to set some containers that are labeled storm debris only for female purposes, and, and that's what this would give us. Going back to the sorting of recyclables and also going back to what Commissioner Waters spoke, the mixed material collection, if you recall the first photograph that Caroline put up, it was at Wake County. We all know Wake County's large, they've got tons of people. That was a really large shelter. The shelter's not this big. And, and I would call it a shelter. It's a, you know, still being with a, just a covered canopy, and as you come up to that shelter, if you have a refrigerator, once every 10 years, you go buy a new refrigerator, you go there. If you walk in, perhaps to the, to the right immediately is where the appliances are. Perhaps if you walk, you know, 10 steps further, that's where the oil, used motor oil is. If we're actually, if there's an attendant there that's monitoring it, then we could go under contract to accept vegetable oil. We can't do that now because we don't, they're worried about contamination, but if there's, if it's being monitored, then we can have a vegetable oil place. Then, you know, perhaps we could have other things such as gasoline or, or other things. But that building, did it end up 40/50?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's a 40-by-50 shelter. So that's large enough to have a cubby here, a cubby here, a cubby there, signage and that type of thing, so that things are sorted and it's very clear. that type of thing, so that things are sorted and it's very clear. But I would dare say, the majority of the time, residents will not go to that mixed material, because they're going to go to use the recyclables and then the MSW slash bulk. But on occasion, if once a month you're cleaning out your vegetable oil, or we start taking oyster shells again, it would be a bucket full of oyster shells, different things like that. So we're hoping that the size of that 40-by-50 shelter will give us expansion, room to expand our services in the future. Household hazardous waste, something we've all talked about, something that I'm sure all of us received the phone calls, how do I get rid of this? How do I get rid of that? That's perhaps where we could do it. We may not be able to do it six days a week, but we might be able to house events where we hire a contractor to come in, you know, twice a year, and you can bring your paint, and they would come to that one location that's right there, and they load it up and take it off. But it gives us the flexibility, obviously, a shelter out of the weather. You can schedule things, you're not worried about the rain, and we can hopefully expand our services as regulations and commodity markets change.
Yes, sir.
That looks like about 10 acres.
It's probably a little larger than 10 acres when you look at a square going around the entire facility. I think we were planning on more like 15.
15. I think it might be wise to consider considerably more than that, if we can.
Well, yes. I mean, I understand your point. Again, this, this is a design that's not based on any site. You know, this was like, this gives you the first step. What are we looking for? How big a site are we looking for? What are the characteristics of the site? And, you know, I, I agree that the first thing, you don't want to be pinned in first time, something changes. I agree with that.
Is it the opportunity that we might get a better deal if we buy more? And it's, land's going to go up? I don't think it's going to go down in Beaufort County. I think we're in North Carolina.
Well, you know, I, I think that what we wanted to do was present a design to you that we thought hit, hit all the points. You know, and I'm, and I'm standing in front of you telling you, the only point it's not hitting is probably a little more expensive than I told you it was going to be. And, but I think if you were to build something like this, this would be a, one, this would be a nice facility, usable facility in this area.
So Vance, you mentioned earlier in the conversation about lighting. I'm assuming you want to minimize the number of poles for folks to run into, so you'd use like large-area lighting that wouldn't, except probably around the loading areas for the public.
So, you know, we envision all the, all the shed areas would have lights up under them. So that's, but as the areas coming in and going out, do you have like streetlights-type stuff going on? I mean, I think you need to consider, we talked about the yard waste area. You know, do we, do we go to the expense of lighting the yard waste area because you're going to operate it, you know, how many hours a year in the dark? I don't know. You know, it, all those things need to be worked out. So, but I, there's a number of those items that I just, that I just mentioned. But I think we're here to say, this is what we proposed. What do you like? What do you not like? I guess was the idea.
Anything that we missed?
Yeah.
And again, this, this is based off residential use, and this would be closing some of the existing sites, and then this would be located, centrally located in order to bring traffic from at least three different sites coming in, and then reducing the scope at the outlined site, so that we would only be accepting recyclables and municipal solid waste, no building in the area. So again, keeping in mind that that's why it was done like this. The tires, I will clarify here, this is just a single bin. This is for residents only. We would put a minimum number of tires, excuse me, a maximum number of tires that are allowed for loads, four or five? So large commercial operations would still have to take it somewhere else. We would have to do that different. We would not have commercial vehicles coming in, because they, they fill up a 40-yard at that time, two loads and it's done. So this would be, this is designed for residential use.
I want to back up on something Vance said earlier, that was an option, something we need to consider, and that is whether we buy the ground or whether we buy the equipment to keep the site going. To me, that comes down to what our flexibility in being able to wheel and deal on where we put the stuff they will haul off of there. If you're going to go to a contract, you only have one option, you're going to go to in Birdie County. You don't need to buy the equipment yourself. But if you want to be able to negotiate with other land disposal sites in the area and maybe get better prices, then we would want to buy that equipment.
I think your comment was including the compactors as well, is that right?
Oh, yes. All the equipment. We wouldn't want to be hung into a contract if they have to know something. If we were just buying part of the equipment.
I, I agree with Hood. I, I think on these mega sites, we own the land and we own the equipment, everything there. And then that gives us flexibility of letting somebody else haul everything off the property.
Yes, sir.
What's next?
I think that's all we, we're here to answer your questions.
Well, you danced, you danced all right in the cause.
Yeah.
Why don't you throw that number up there?
Well, it's, it's a hard number to pin down, but, you know, we still have some things we need to pin down. But you're closer to three than two on this one.
And this without the land?
Sir? That includes the land. We assumed, I believe we, in the budget, I'm just saying, I don't know if this, should I even say this? I think my assumption in the budget was about 15 acres of land at $10,000 an acre. I mean, don't know if we'll do better than that, but, I mean, the budget included that.
Well, while everybody thinks everything's going to keep going straight up, I can look at history and tell you that that hasn't worked in the past. So, you know, things might get cheaper.
Yes, sir.
Right now, it looks kind of bad, but that's not built in.
So, and I'll tell you this, also, you have options down the road. Ms. Richardson, you talked about asphalt versus concrete. We bid jobs all the time as alternatives. What is the deduct asphalt and replacement concrete? What does that, do I, you know, you get to see both prices and say, do I want it or not? You know, you get to make the decision at the time of a bid. That's an example of a way you can kind of look at both of them.
But you need to discount the concrete, because the concrete has a whole lot less maintenance on it than what the asphalt does.
It looks good, there's no doubt.
Looks good, it's clean.
Vance, I, I think since, I think one of the first things we're going to do is start looking around at land. I think your land is going to control how you design this to a large extent. So you want to be able to be flexible on the land. I mean, I wouldn't hem yourself into $150,000. I mean, if you got to go more, go more. And you might save money later by getting the right piece of land.
I understand. I was just, the only reason I bring up the number
Yeah.
is I wanted you to be aware, you know, this is, you know, this site is going to cost some money to build.
I mean, you're, whatever land you get, you're probably going to have, you're going to have some, some watershed on it to deal with, and that's not usable land. I mean, it's great to keep it drained, but we could end up getting an 80, 90-acre site and have only 50, 60 acres you could actually ever use.
Or use for other purposes.
Why does that matter? It depends on the land.
Well, I, I think that's part of the stuff we're supposed to do, is go and look at some options.
Yeah.
And all those will be part of the consideration.
Yeah.
But I, I think, I guess what we're looking for today, somebody asked me, what are you looking for today? What we're looking for is, is this a concept you could get behind? Or are you saying, go home and start over and bring me something back that is totally different? I think that's what I was really looking for, is a resolved business.
From, from my vantage point, I mean, this is, you can, you can play around it and play around with it, but it meets all of the criteria, I think, that, that we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
You know, with safety being a big part, making sure we can get everybody off the highway. The only thing that somebody's going to say to me is, you spent $3 million, and I still can't carry my 2x4?
That's what bothers me. And you've answered that, I think, with future expansion and the ability to change.
We do have that, the ability to change. And this is, this is Christina's thoughts on C and D. Residential C and D, and that's part of the, C and D is a type of waste. Is the, there are two different options. C and D produced by residents and C and D produced by commercial entities. And that's what the county has, has never provided that service before, as far as accepting what is considered true C and D from anyone. However, if, in my opinion, if the commissioners would like to investigate C and D by residents only in small quantities, and to me, that is the key, in small quantities. We had a conversation with a pre-presser salesperson yesterday, and again, it's the tonnage, because we do not have our own landfill. We cannot dispose the C and D. So C and D is heavy. Something that's heavy means it's expensive to haul. And then we are a large county, so you're talking a lot of, you're talking high disposal costs as well as high transportation costs. So if you manage the quantity of the C and D, when you tell someone, you can only bring three cubic yards, you can only bring five 2x4s, or if you're putting it in a pre-presser, you size your hopper so that it only fits in that, and then you say you can only come one day a week, or you do it with policies. But you have to write the policy strong enough to keep the tonnage down. Do you make an appointment to somebody? Do you have a staff person that manages it and says, well, John Smith brought it in one time a month, and he's only allowed to bring it in two times a year? It has to be somehow managed, and that's where Vance says it's, it's an expensive endeavor. You're either paying it on one end, or you're paying it on the other end. But if your goal is to allow residents to bring small quantities of C and D, then my belief is this plan would allow us to add that service in the future. I don't think this plan as is will ever allow us to provide C and D for commercial people.
And, and I'm not advocating that. And I'm not advocating having anybody come up there with a trailer, dual-lapse or trailer with a dump on it. I mean, I've seen that several times. But it does concern me when we have somebody in the Aurora area or in the Pantea area that's got to drive all the way with about a half of a pickup load all the way to Flanders.
Well, I think we gave the best advice to begin with. If you've just got a little bit of it, bust it up, put it in a trash bag and let it go. That's, that's, you know, that takes care of it. Other than that, you're becoming semi-commercial, and your contractors that are doing your work in your house, that are generating this stuff, it's up to you to tell them they are going to get rid of it. That's part of the deal. That's how it works.
And, and the construction industry has done well. When we started locking down these things, they evolved, they all got those dump trailers, and they, and, and they're not complaining anymore. I had a few calls about, I can't throw a toilet away. I get that. But I said, bust it up, put it in a bag, and throw it away. But, yeah, well, I think I dumped, last week it was $40 for a lot of stuff, so you just got to, you just got to figure in the costs.
So what questions do we have to answer?
I think, I think he's on target. I mean, I don't have a problem with what he's presented.
Yeah, we got, we got questions that we need to answer on top of this, right?
Yeah, we're going to be back talking to these guys again.
My question is, what do we want to discuss on Tuesday, July 5th, at the Full and Board Commissioners Meeting? Do we want to summarize this meeting? Do we want to just state that we reviewed and here at Moore is, is now proceeding to the next step of land, land search? What do, how do we want to do that? Do we want to do a mini presentation on July 5th? What, what are the?
Right now, you've done pretty good today. I don't even think we're going to do that today.
Oh, how are we?
I, I said, didn't mean that.
Speaker, am I?
I mean, that's, that's just me. I mean, we need more time to think about the direction we're going.
Consent. Well, some, some of this is going to be, excuse me, some of this is going to be influenced by, I understand, we're going, we're going to have some items to adjust on the so-called free money that the federal government has put to us. So, you know, once we start asking those questions, we're going to have better answers for these people. I don't see any point in them coming back at the next meeting unless they want to come back, unless Christina wants to come back.
No, sir. I think we can skip July, and based upon any decisions that are made in the July meeting, then we may come back in August. But I think here at Moore, I think they have what they need to proceed and to, to start. Again, this is a detailed conceptual plan. They'll start looking at some more things and starting to look at land acquisition, that type of thing.
And the only thing that I'm, that I'm looking for now is, is the difference in why we need 15 acres or 25 acres of land instead of, I mean, that's the only thing, that's, that's the minimum.
Well, Mr. I can give you the modern theory on permitting in these systems. Get all the land you can, because eventually the regulators are going to get around to you, and you're probably going to have to buy more land. That's, that's, that's the, that's the theory. That's what I tell my clients.
Any, any other comments or questions?
No.
I, I, I think it's excellent, what you.
Well, thank you. We, we obviously appreciate the opportunity, and I'm, I'm very pleased that you are satisfied with it. Thank you very much. I understand.
Anita, did you, Ryan, did I, did somebody's hand go up?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, this is our second. Second, all those, they will raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
We have to run off.